Good evening. Call the council to order at 7:00 PM. This is a regular town council meeting of August 16, 2021. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
George? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. According to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else is recording this meeting, please identify yourself for the audience. Otto, would you like to take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Powers?
Present.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Klune? Counselor Eager?
Here.
Counselor DiStefano?
Here.
Counselor Beck?
Here.
President Griffin?
Here.
Thank you, Clerk Prizell. I've moved to approve the agenda as outlined.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes. Eight in favor, zero opposed. Agenda is approved. Motion, representative? Move on to public hearings. I'll turn it over to Counselor DiStefano to move to public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing relative to the utility petition submitted by Verizon for a utility pole placement on Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. I would open it up to anybody in the audience who would like to address this. We have a representative for Verizon Wireless. If you'll just announce who you are.
My name is Steve Crawford. I'm representing Verizon for pole placement, our in-pole placement on Mount Pleasant Street. Verizon would like to place one joint land pole, number 21S/21F, on the northeast side of Mount Pleasant Street. Approximately 68 acres of the centerline of Sunnyside Street, together with anchor guides and other subsistence protective materials as necessary. So, the pole will be erected substantially in accordance with the code and the code of Verizon, number 1A4, 1212, in July 8, 2021. As a permission for the commencing of the auto, the wires, and the public, the second public ways, the purpose of the connections, and such falls in building, as said, petition is made as our district's distribution purpose. The reason is to place one joint land pole that will make a private property address pass and provide for the distribution of the elements, and trouble communications, and for the transition of the power to the current. I don't think I need to read the construction methods, but I can read that. The reason mostly for this is because there's free answers to any questions we may ask later. Currently, there is a, what is called the pole, an anchor guide, that's on the way to a tree, which supports the pole that's on the corner of Sunnyside and Mount Pleasant. The landowner, which I met tonight, they, he's taken down most of the tree, and the only thing left away is the horizon exactly where he's going to pull it to the street. So, the purpose is to put a pole in so that they can take the tree down. The tree is kind of halfway from lining off to the right leg. So, it's an aerial trespass because it's the lane to the tree that's like half owned by the town and half owned by the landlord. The landlord didn't have any objections when I met him. He has nothing, because the problem he does come on by, as well as any of the other partners. He did say he met with his neighbor across the street, and he didn't have any issues with it.
Great. Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anybody wish to address the council on the petition for Mount Pleasant Avenue? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. Any additional comments on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion to close has passed. Back over to Counselor DiStefano.
Move to open the public hearing relative to the utility petition submitted by New Singular Wireless, AT&amp;T, to install an antenna and related equipment on existing pole located on Memorial Avenue.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. Sir, please.
Good evening. Michael Dolan from the law firm of Brown Rudner, here on behalf of the applicant AT&amp;T. My client has licenses, as you may know, to operate a wireless telecommunications network throughout the Commonwealth and here in the, and throughout the United States. What AT&amp;T is proposing here is a small cell antenna installation on an existing EverSource utility pole in the public right of way near 1390 Memorial Ave., in order to deal with rapidly increasing demand on its network. Specifically, AT&amp;T's larger macro antennas, which are up on towers and big rooftops, those are not providing adequate data capacity and coverage in this area due to heavy usage. So, AT&amp;T approached EverSource about allowing it to attach a small cell antenna facility to this pole, to a EverSource pole. So, what EverSource does is takes that area that we identify that we need to be in to meet consumer demand, and they, they direct us to a specific pole. In this case, after having ruled out poles that have closers, transformers, lights, and the like, which cause, you know, those types of things are impediments to installing our small cell antenna on them, they directed us to this specific pole. It does not need to be replaced, like some small antenna facilities require. What we're proposing is one antenna side-mounted on the existing 34-foot utility pole at a centerline height of 22 and 1/2 feet. There will be a small equipment cabinet affixed to the side of the pole with two remote radio heads mounted inside, together with some related equipment. And there's also some fiber optic cable and electric meter with a shut-off switch. And that rounds out what is a very, very impactful facility as far as providing this service to a targeted area. It doesn't require a lot of equipment, but it does have an enormous impact on the residents and businesses in that area. So, in short, AT&amp;T with this facility would be able to more effectively handle data for the residents and businesses in West Springfield at faster speeds and with better and more reliable coverage and service.
Thank you, Attorney Dolan. The public hearing is open. Anybody wish to address the council with relation to the New Singular Wireless petition for pole located on Memorial Ave.? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Counselor Powers? Again, this is just to close the public hearing. We would take this up later on.
Right. Can we debate, keep the open one more meeting?
The public hearing?
Yep.
You can debate the motion, right? You can discuss the reason why you would want to continue it. Is there a reason why you would want to continue it?
Yeah, I was out of town, and I wanted to make sure my constituents are okay with it.
I think that's a reasonable request from the district council. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to move the public hearing. We'll vote Counselor Powers. Let's move to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
No.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
No.
Counselor Griffin votes yes. A vote of five in favor, three opposed, and the motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on, public comment. Anybody wish to address the council this evening?
I'll do it. I'll communicate.
Seeing none, move to approve the minutes, the public, regular minutes and public hearing minutes of 7:19, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes. A vote of eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Clerk Prizell. Petitions, remonsters, and communications. Any petitions, remonsters, and communications from my fellow counselors? Counselor Kelly?
I'd like to note the passing of a longtime West Springfield police officer and detective, Ray Yvonne. And he served the town well for many, many years, and he passed last week. I think he was getting up there. Eighty-five.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Any other petitions, remonsters, and communications? Right? No adoption, introduction, adoption, resolution, ordinance, appropriations? Town council will hold the public hearing on September 7, 2021, to consider the mayor's request pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, for an appropriation of insurance proceeds in the amount of $165,503 to purchase a replacement truck for the DPW. This is the first reading of that request, and the item has been referred to the budget subcommittee for review. Moving on, reports of office or boards or committees. Human Resources, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. To the chair, we did meet tonight to address the clerk of the council position, and hopefully I'll have some modifications to the mayor's proposal I could present to the council as a whole before the end of August.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan. I know that you're stewarding this through. Tom bless you.
I don't know. I heard there was a log jam, so I'm not sure how well I'm doing.
Counselor Beck, budget.
So, budget, did meet this evening. We learned about the, what was just read, $165,503 from the insurance. There was a truck in the DPW that was damaged. We have the insurance money. And so, that has to go before the council because it's greater than $150,000 that we would be appropriating, appropriating that insurance money toward the purchase of a new truck, as the truck that was damaged is not repairable. So, that's what that's about, and that'll be up for public hearing on September 7. We also met with Josephine Sarnelli, who has been serving the council for many years now as an auditor and budget analyst. And I got some terrific input from my fellow counselors, both on the budget committee and not on the budget committee, as far as what we need to look at. And this is just, just, I want to say this for the folks at home, so they understand. She is a great tool in our toolkit as a council, because our job is to be a check on the mayor and a check on the town government and the budget, and just to make, you know, to be kind of oversee and to audit. So, she is, brings that service to us and answers to the council, not to the mayor, so that she can do some research as far as making sure that funds are being expended the right way, so that for grants, for instance, that the town receives, or for, you know, departments that use maybe more overtime than they should. And so, she's going to be coming back to us in a few weeks with a plan based on the input from the counselors tonight, as far as what she's going to be looking at on behalf of the council, to make sure that our town is being run properly and efficiently and effectively. So, we also discussed the CSX rail detection system, which we'll be discussing in a minute here. So, anyway, that's what budget took up tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. We're going to miss your leadership in this regard. He's done an excellent job with this budget subcommittee over the last couple, year and a half.
Thank you.
In its policy, Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we actually discussed what we'll be discussing next, an unfinished business, the commercial kennels, the outdoor seating ordinance, and the bear hole revolving fund. So, if it's okay with you, I'll just skip to those. Thank you.
Traffic and safety, Counselor Kelly?
I filled in for Counselor Eager, who was flying back from his trip. And we had a couple of people from the community there. We had Maureen Ryan from Chestnut Street and Kings Highway about the, the traffic on Kings Highway, and some of the things we need to do to remediate that. We also had Sue Buzinkowicz about the problems, ongoing problems of Eldred Javino. And I had reached out to Jeb Belize outside the council meeting, and he's cooperating with the neighborhood. He's putting cameras up on the back of his building. It seems that some of the citizens from the Riverdale motels like to congregate on that street, and there's, after the sun goes down, there's some things that we don't want going on, on that street. I understand the Blight Committee is looking at it also. We also talked with Connor Knightley from the DPW about the traffic, possible traffic, the concept of bump outs and traffic breaks on Union Street in West Springfield. And we continued a couple of things to September 7. That would be, the truck exclusion would be one of them. Connor is doing some research on that. And we're going to talk some more about Eldred Javino on the September 7 traffic and safety meeting. We, I signed the temporary order for no parking on Western Avenue and Day Street. And that's all we got done.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Counselor DiStefano, utilities, did not meet tonight, but we'll talk about that as we move forward. Thank you, sir. Counselor Powers, I'll turn it over to you to move the commercial kennels.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the zoning ordinance amendment proposed by Mayor William Reichel to add a commercial kennel as an allowed use in the business A, business B, and business B1 zoning districts by site plan review.
Second?
Second.
Any, back over to you for the report of the subcommittee and any further discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, we did discuss this tonight. We discussed it in our July meeting, and I believe we discussed it in our May meeting. And we actually, as the subcommittee, agreed that what we would like to do is to make a motion to amend the site plan review requirements to a special permit by the planning board. And at some point, I will be making that motion, but that is what we passed, three to nothing, tonight, after some healthy discussion on the topic and the ordinance itself. There are some additional pieces that some counselors, myself included, would like to see from a health standpoint, you know, an annual permit standpoint, making sure that it's not going to bother, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming, two, three, four, five families, as West Springfield does have those types of homes. But that will come later on in a general ordinance. That was the subcommittee.
Now, is there an additional motion to come before the?
There is. I didn't know if anyone else wanted to discuss that piece. So, with that being said, I would like to make a motion, to amend the main motion, to allow the use by special permit from the planning board.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly?
If I can just explain this piece. So, this piece, you know, I kind of just explained in part what we'd like to do, you know, once this is approved, in terms of the general ordinance, making sure that these are run properly. But what's in front of us tonight is a zoning piece and a zoning piece only. So, those concerns that I brought up really kind of went to, you know, general ordinance is not something that could be covered in this. And we thought with the zones that are going to be included in this, with what we will allow tonight, if this does pass, allowing the special permit from the planning board would allow them to look into all the details, neighbors, give notices to abutters, allow them time to comment at a public hearing that the planning board holds, but also to look at each individual business that may propose something like this, and essentially make sure that it fits the neighborhood aesthetically, but also from a noise standpoint as well. That was, I can speak on behalf of the subcommittee, why we made that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion, please?
Just a procedural question, and maybe I missed it because of all the noise in the audience, and I didn't hear it. But was, was there a second to Counselor Powers' original motion to move the zoning ordinance amendment to the mayor?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. That was all.
I'm not that old, but certainly was. Totally on Friday, so. Counselor O'Brien?
I was in that committee. I just want to clarify, by reading this, that we've, we've struck by site plan review and turned it into special permit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, by reading this, it says by site plan review?
So, that is, that was the original motion? Site plan review was the original motion, and then the original motion was amended? So, the original motion got a second, and it was on the floor for that. Then the second motion was made for a special permit?
For all those zoning areas. That's okay. I just wanted to be clear on this.
So, Counselor Powers, if you would, can you speak to the special permit, a little bit more about the special permit process and what the committee thought about the change between site plan reserve, site plan review, and the special permit process? I know it has more teeth, but you might want to?
I certainly can. I mean, I think there were a lot of concerns about the safety of the animals that go, about the square footage per dog that can be used, about amount of dogs per people. You know, we don't want to allow businesses to come in, you know, the doggy daycare sites that you do hear about, something happens, a dog's attacked, you know. But we wanted to make sure that that doesn't happen, that there's adequate staffing, it's healthy, or it's a, it's a health-conscious business, especially we want to figure out where dogs are going to the bathroom. I mean, you know, there's a lot of ins and outs to it. But the other piece, too, is, you know, the zones that we're allowing, BA, BB, and BB1 do have some mixed-use properties in there. We tried to remove, or we looked at removing, those zones that might have a two-family or a three-family or something next door, but in looking at those three zones, it's nearly impossible to do so. We did look at doing the overlay districts. There's a few in town, but that also limits it to certain areas. By special permit, when you submit your proposal to the planning board, you have to send out notices to the abutters. So, if you're looking to put something in the Memorial Ave. section, and you have someone that does therapy next door, you know, they would get a notice that your business is looking to go in. You would then get a notice for public comment to be made at the public hearing the planning board has. It's an adequate opportunity for any neighboring businesses to come to that public hearing and speak their mind. I think in the past, I can't speak for everyone else here, that the planning board at times has done fantastic jobs of listening to, listening to abutters. And, you know, because we can't control all of those, and because you can't individually look at each parcel, both from a time standpoint, but also because it would be spot zoning. I don't know why it took me that long to think about that. You can't really limit it to, to more than the, the use, the zones that we've allowed. So, I mean, that's really what brought us there after, really, a few meetings of discussion on that. And like I said, this is just about the zone and what zones it would be allowed in. Next is going to come a general ordinance, where we're going to be able to look at other towns, you know, see what those, you know, dog-to-person ratios are, square footage is. And like I said at the meeting tonight, when we started talking about that, when you look at zoning, you know, there's difference, there's differences in zones. So, you know, you have your retail area, you have office space. You know, I don't even know what you would consider an area where the dogs go to the bathroom, but each one of those has parking requirements as well. So, when you start getting into the nitty-gritty bits, bits and pieces of it, you know, it's, it's a lot, you know. So, we thought this would be a great idea in the interim, while we work on all those pieces. The planning board can look at this piece by piece. One of those pieces for, for those counselors that may have perked their ears up after everything I just said, we want to add some type of an annual renewal, where, you know, there is a check by the town to make sure that you're still complying. And if we make that a piece of the requirements, from what we understand, if you're pre-existing to this, you're not going to be grandfathered in because it's going to be an annual renewal permit. So, I mean, I think that's the low, the low down of five meetings on that. I don't know if anyone has questions on it, but certainly have been to answer some.
Any other questions amongst my fellow counselors? I appreciate the eloquence. I think it's the cathedral shirt, though.
Definitely.
Counselor Beck?
I just want to say that I'll be supporting this. I want to be pro-business and welcoming to businesses, and there is an excellent business in town that has a lot of support from a lot of dog owners who want to, you know, be able to drop their dog off at a, at a good location that takes good care of their dogs. But the main reason I'm supporting it is the last thing you said, that, that we're going to have a provision in place with, with basically an annual check, so that if, if some business opens and turns into a disaster of noise and smell, that there will be a way to shut it down. So, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Any further discussion amongst my fellow, Counselor Kelly?
One of the things, as you've been up here a few terms, and you discovered that while something may seem very nice on the surface, you could have passed something that has unintended consequences for the residents of West Springfield. And I think we're all very careful not to do that, so congratulations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, and the motion passes. Oh, the amendment passes. Now, that makes it the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this, Attorney O'Brien Scott, as well. Back to you, Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, move to approve the general ordinance. No, I don't need to read that. So, I'm going to withdraw this without prejudice. I submitted this originally, just by way of a history, for those of you that haven't or aren't aware of this. I submitted this in the fall of 2019, right before COVID. COVID happened, the emergency. COVID happened, the emergency orders went into effect by the, by the governor, businesses were allowed to set up outside shops, essentially where you were able to expand your serviceability area, your service area. And I resubmitted this this spring when I thought that the emergency orders were going to end. At the time, when I resubmitted, I said last year was fantastic. We were able to see on the trial run how it worked, how some, how some companies were able to adapt, how some companies were, businesses were able to expand, what footprints they used, what barriers they used, you know, from, from a safety standpoint, we're able to see a lot of, of what probably we should and should not do. Since I've resubmitted it, the emergency order was extended through, I think, April or May of 2022. And I've had some conversations with the building department in addition to some business owners in town, but also gotten some great feedback from some of my fellow colleagues on the council. And what seems to be happening is some businesses are expanding permanent structures, which are essentially taking away some of those permit parking, required parking spaces for your square footage. Like I said earlier, there's a lot to look into, but depending on how much square footage you have that you have in a service side, you need that many parking spots. You know, this technically was supposed to be temporary, but what we're seeing with some of these permanent structures going up is not only the loss of parking, we're seeing some handicap parking spots being lost entirely with them not being made up, which is unacceptable entirely. But what we're also seeing is occupancy limits rising, which is great. It's really good to see people supporting local businesses. However, you have requirements through the mass regulations about how many people you can have in occupancy rate, but also how many bathrooms go to that. So withdrawing this is going to accomplish a few things. One, I now have, hopefully, if I get re-elected this fall, you know, into the winter and spring of 2022, but also it allows me to sit down with the building department and essentially address some of those concerns, you know, on a more specific basis and, and essentially ensure that those issues don't arise, or if they do arise, we can tackle them with uniformity and, and not different each time. And those that are applying for these expanded sites have the proper guidelines to do so.
Great. Thank you. Words of that. Back to you again, Bear Hole Revolving Fund.
Thank you.
Busy guy.
Yes. So move to approve the general ordinance amendment proposed by Mayor William Reichelt to amend Section 2512 of the general ordinances related to establishing a Bear Hole Revolving Fund.
Second.
Second, I beg Counsel Kelly. Report to the committee and any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we voted three to nothing in favor of this. This is just adding language to our general ordinance finance chapter that establishes the Bear Hole Revolving Fund and then essentially pieces to that. Right now, you know, the proceeds of the sale will temporarily be held in the town's real estate account. Once we vote to establish this fund, the mayor's office will come back and seek an appropriation from us so that we can assign it to the revolving fund specifically. At that point in time, you know, we're going to be able to look at, I think, how that money's used, the yearly expenditures of that. And we'll be able to have a much more in-depth discussion about those funds and the funds that we place in there and their use at that time. Right now, it's just to add the language in there to set up the revolving fund.
Any further discussion amongst my fellow counselors? Counsel DeStefano?
Just through the chair to Counselor Powers, I think, if memory serves, the proposal submitted by the mayor was to have the conservation agent make recommendations from this fund, for expenditures from this fund to the mayor for ultimate approval. My initial reaction was that, given that the bear hole area is, you know, protected for recreational activities, whether they be passive or active, can be, you know, I guess legislated at a different meeting and, you know, subject to the conditions of the I'm curious as to whether or not the mayor ever provided the subcommittee with any guidance as to why he thought the conservation agent was preferred to the rec department. Or whoever can answer, it doesn't matter.
I was, I was going to say that was a good question.
Attorney O'Brien Scott.
I'm happy to answer that. I guess I'm the mayor's behalf. We did actually talk about both recreation director and the conservation agent. I think we ended up going with conservation agent just because, you know, the idea was to protect it for conservation purposes and allow recreation as kind of a secondary piece of it. And additionally, because the recreation department has so many programs in different areas where the money could be sent, we thought that by putting it with the conservation agent, we, you know, limit the uses that it would be utilized for and, you know, ensure that it's not being used kind of loosely for, to support a recreation program that could be minorly related to bear hole, whereas it, you know, I think by putting the conservation agent in charge of it, you're ensuring that the conservation values are protected first and not that the recreation is done passively second. But it can be used for recreation purposes. It was just kind of a, the thought being the conservation person would be more conservation-minded with the sending, which was the whole purpose of the conservation restriction.
Thank you, Kate. With that in mind, I'd like to make an amendment to the proposed motion that we would strike the conservation agent and insert the, I don't know if her title is Recreation Director or Park and Recreation Director. And then if I get a second, I would just elaborate why.
Insert a second for discussion purposes?
So the way this is structured, per the mayor's recommendation, is that any type of ultimate approval of the funds have to go through the mayor anyways, you know, as they should, being the executive for the town. I just believe that the reason we set the conservation restriction obviously was for conservation, but we need to do things with that property. And to me, you know, the, the, the best thing we can do is have people there recreating in that area, keeping an eye on, on what's happening. And if, and I don't believe this would happen, if the rec director were to try to spend money from an account that was clearly set up for bear hole, the mayor would see that for what it is and, and decide not to, to spend it. And, and if we saw that type of activity happening, we would ask questions as to why money set aside in this, in this reserve for bear hole was being spent for, say, a tennis court on Main Street, because that clearly would violate the spirit of what I think we're doing. I, I just personally believe that the, the rec director is better able to, I think, use the money for what I hope would be recreational activities in bear hole. And we know if we don't have money to do those types of things in some account, it's going to be difficult to find money elsewhere to do it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just to clarify, the motion is to strike the conservation agent and then place, put the recreation director, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Powers first and then Counsel Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like the idea of the conservation agent as, as the individual that's in charge because of the general idea. We have wetlands back there, we have animals. I think they would be more into, nothing against Ms. Connor, Mrs. Connor at all. I think she does a phenomenal job with our programs. You know, one of the things that actually popped into my mind, and this is more of a talking point, is, you know, you could have some sort of a summer program. I know we have bears in town and I know that that's always a concern, but, you know, instead of Camp Centrum, which it's not there anymore, it's at the middle school. But, you know, to be able to go there for a day or a week program, I think that would actually be an awesome idea. I don't know what the logistics are, what planning goes into it, but I would hope that the conservation agent will work in conjunction with the Parks and Recs. And I'm guessing that, that's part of what you're thinking, Counselor. And I, I'm certainly in favor of, of activities like that down there. Just something that I had not contemplated before you brought it up, and that's my first response to it, but that's kind of where I'm coming from on that point.
Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you to my esteemed colleague. The conservation, because there's covenants put on the bear hole properties or acreage, the conservation agent would be more keen to what those restrictions might be. We have to also remember that there's restrictions on those properties based on the carbon sequestration program as far as cutting and other certain things like that, which again, the conservation agent is highly entombed to based on the restrictions that are there. So I don't want to say from a legal perspective, but from a contract perspective on two different programs, it would make sense to me that the conservation agent would be the one who would oversee to make sure there wasn't any violations because they would end up going to that person anyway. Maybe that's an argument, well, we'll start with the rec and then end up with the conservation. I don't know if that's what your, your plan was. And there are programs where they, they bust the kids into Counselor Powers' comment. The environmental committee pays to have, I think it's fifth graders go in there and they have classrooms in the bear hole reservoir. So it is utilized for classroom space and teaching and tours and those sorts of things. So it's, it's active when it comes to passive recreation. So in conjunction with that, I, I believe the, the mayor and his team made the right decision, putting the conservation agent as the overseer of the property because of, again, the covenants and some of the programs that go on there. And it's been working well, quite frankly, for a while. Years back, I remember I would ask why the park and rec person wasn't in charge and, or the conservation agent even more so, but it was always under the water department, which, you know, was a reservoir, so. But it makes sense to me that the conservation agent would be the one that would be the, the point person on it and then, you know, whatever other suggestions might play out that, you know, he or she, whoever the person is at that time, would be able to handle it and move forward.
Thank you, Counsel O'Brien.
I agree that the mayor and the town council chose the rationale they used is proper, in my opinion. It's a more narrow, having someone who's dealing with conservation is what you should have in charge of the conservation area and the funds involved in it. And I'm sure that if there's a program that's viable, that he's not going to be or she's not going to be against it, but it would, you know, the, the park and rec department has its own budget that it can fund its things out of. That money is earmarked and should be spent strictly on preservation and protection of that, of that area. So I, I agree that with the other counselors, that the rationale was proper and the narrow perspective of using the conservation agent as the conduit is the right way to go.
Thank you, Counsel O'Brien. Counsel Beck?
Can I just ask for clarity on where the funds are coming to establish the revolving fund? And then is, are there, will there be more funds going into that fund and where those would come from?
Attorney O'Brien Scott, will you answer?
I'd be happy to. So the initial funds that are going to come in there are the funds from the proceeds of the sale of the conservation restrictions, so the million dollars, dollars less our closing costs, that's just being held in a, a real estate gross receipts account right now. And then any future donations, any kind of revenue we get from bear hole, whether it's, you know, issuing tickets for violations or running programs in there, or, you know, if Audubon is, Audubon is going to donate another $50,000 that they've committed to for the stewardship and protection of the land. So basically, any, any receipt, revenue, donation that is earmarked for bear hole will come in here. And then, again, I don't, whatever happens with the, there's a program that's operated there that somehow generates income, that would all go in there. So any, any specific receipt that can be attributed to bear hole will go in this revolving fund.
Thank you. And so just based on that answer, yeah, I, I agree with my fellow counselors that the conservation agent, and this is conservation money to establish the fund, the million dollars, it's for conservation. And then as far as other funds that come in, smaller amounts. But anyway, yeah, I just agree that it makes sense to, to have the conservation agent be the person to oversee the fund.
Counsel Kelly?
I'm Rick Adali, Sergeant. President Griffin? Thank you, sir. One of the things that, I appreciate that, I appreciate Counselor DeStefano bringing this up because one of the most important facets of the bear hole agreement is the management plan. And one must imagine and one must, we have to be cognizant that the park and rec department has to be involved in that management plan. So that management plan, now the spending of the money, I totally, I get Counsel DeStefano's point, but that management plan is going to be just as important from a standpoint of how we utilize the property moving forward. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Attorney O'Brien Scott is establishing that management plan committee of which park and rec will have to, well, we urge that park and rec will be a part of because that will be part of that undertaking of that committee for the management plan to be presented. So that, that's the only reason why I stepped down, Counsel Kelly, because I think it's an important facet and I think Counsel DeStefano's point is well taken because they need to be part of this process regardless. And I think that's where, where this is headed, such that I just wanted to bring it up. So thank you, Counsel Kelly.
Counsel Powers, did you have another?
Mainly just a comment. And I think I certainly don't need to suggest this because of how great they've been over the years, but, you know, if I can make a suggestion to Parks and Rec adding something in, like my idea from a few minutes ago, sounds like a great thing to do.
What is it?
Just like some programs with the park and rec in conjunction with like summer programs. I mean, I think that would have been awesome if I had that opportunity to do it years ago. And I was trying to be a little facetious there.
To Ed's point, the environmental committee does have that. They started under, under, I think it was under Diane Cole. Counsel, former Counsel Diane Cole was adamant about that. And the environmental committee started that process, but you want to expand it even further, which is great.
I mean, I just, I think bringing Parks and Rec into that is a great idea.
Counsel Kelly?
I, I think that the council has shown their financial management of, of all the town departments. I would expect that the council would be involved in the, the bear hole management plan. I would certainly hope so. And I think that the, the fact that most of our departments these days cooperate with one another. It's not like when we're back in town meeting and one department sued the other department. But I think, I, I think your point's well taken, Counselor DeStefano. But I, I'm sure that we can manage to make sure that this kind of a thoughtful management plan happens.
Thank you. Anything further? So we'll vote on the amended motion. Counsel Powers?
No.
We're voting on the amendment, not the amended motion, the amendment to the motion, right?
Amendment to the motion.
Sorry.
Yeah, the amended motion. It, it is an amended motion. You have to make a motion to amend.
Just for guidance for all of us, by voting yes, we're voting for DeStefano's suggestion?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Powers, again?
No.
Counsel Kelly?
I hated this point, my friend Counselor DeStefano, but I think I'm going to vote no on this also.
Counsel O'Brien?
No.
Counsel Sullivan?
No.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel DeStefano?
Yes.
Counsel Beck?
No.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. I mean, no, I apologize. By a vote of two in favor, six opposed, motion failed. Back onto the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? No? Let's go to a vote. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel DiStefano?
Yes.
Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Counsel DiStefano, would you read the next motion?
Move to approve the proposed utility petition submitted by Verizon for utility pole installation on Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Second.
Second by Counsel Kelly. I know that the utility committee did not meet this evening. I know that you had a party engagement. You recalled it to a meeting, I know. And I appreciate you getting ahold of us on that. Any discussion on this?
No, sir.
Any discussion amongst my fellow counselors on this Mount Pleasant? Counsel Kelly?
I just wondered, it's, what we have in front of us is only the cutting down of a dead tree and the restructuring of the guide wires on the existing program.
As luck would have it, we have the representatives right here, and we'll get that answer. What are you going to do?
The tree has been mostly removed by the property owner. He wants to take the rest of it down.
Okay.
Presently, there is a Verizon guide cable going from the pole to the tree. In order to remove that guide, the pole needs to be placed because it's providing support for the pole that's on the corner. And if there was no guide, the pole would just fall into the street. So we don't want that.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that answer. I didn't know if you were upgrading to 5G or something like that, that we'd probably have a little more in-depth discussion.
That's a whole different subject. But no, it's not, it's not currently in effect.
Any further discussion or any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Counsel Eager?
So is there, I just wanted to make sure I got this correct. There's existing hardware there now, and you're going, take down the old pole and just move a few feet to a new pole?
No. There is an existing pole which is on a corner.
Okay.
There's a support guide cable going from the pole to a tree. The tree is being removed. The tree is providing support for the pole presently. So when the tree gets removed and the landowner wants to take down the rest of the tree, there will be no support for that existing pole.
Okay. So let me see if I got this correct. The pole is pre-existing, and we are only voting on replacing the support structure to balance the pole?
You could say that. The tree is the current support structure.
So we're not voting on new hardware? We're just voting on giving you a better anchor for existing pole?
There will be an additional pole. They call it a stub pole, which will be over near where the tree is presently.
And the hardware will stay the same?
No, because the hardware right now is the tree.
I meant the network hardware.
The network hardware.
Yeah, whatever's, whatever's on the tree.
Yes.
Or on the pole.
There is a certain guide cable that goes from the existing pole to the new pole to support that additional.
Okay. So, all right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any further questions for my fellow counselors? Seeing none, let's go to the vote. Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel DiStefano?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, sir. Have a great evening. Moving on. Counsel DiStefano, back to you.
Move to approve the proposed new singular wireless AT&amp;T to install an antenna and related equipment onto an existing pole located on Memorial Avenue.
Second? Again, we did not meet this evening by subcommittee. Discussion amongst our fellow counselors. Counsel O'Brien?
I object to the vote.
Do we go to September 7th, 7:00 p.m.? Okay. Moving on. Counsel Beck?
Move to authorize the mayor to enter into a five-year contract for services with Ocean State Signal Company for the CSX rail detection system and further to authorize the mayor to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the town of Agawam.
Second.
So we took this up in subcommittee, voted three to zero to approve. Basically, it's the system that lets you know before you get close to the railroad crossing at the bottom of the hill by the river there, that the train is blocking the road, and there are five signals in West Springfield. There are five in Agawam. They are supported by a camera that observes the tracks to see if there's a train there. So this, I'm going to explain this, and if I get it wrong, maybe Connor can help me out, but...
Could you step up to it, Connor?
Okay.
I think it would be helpful for us to hear from Connor as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was going to say, when it was set up, it was with a two-year plan, and that two year has expired, and now we're looking at a five-year plan.
That's correct. When the Morgan-Sullivan Bridge was being reconstructed, the state had the system erected so that Agawam and West Springfield would have ample notice that there was obstruction of front street for those that were attempting to not have to deal with the traffic caused by the bridge construction project. So when the state erected that system, it put five signals in West Springfield, five in Agawam, and a central camera location in West Springfield to actuate the system. The two-year cellular contract for the system work has expired this past May. The system is still currently active through one of the two sensing systems that's part of that system. The camera is no longer active. It is only a matter of time before the rest of the system becomes inactive when they shut down the cellular access for that. So what the town's looking to do, or at least through our department, we are looking to go into a five-year contract with Ocean State Signal so that we can kind of keep it going throughout the five years of, or the next five years to be timed with the oncoming Memorial Ave projects. We feel that it would be a great benefit to both towns to have the system active throughout that project with the foreseeable traffic caused by that product as well. And then, at that five-year period, circle back to renew it for the appropriate amount of time moving forward. So the cost, I believe, is $13,000.
Five hundred. It's 11,000 plus 2,500.
So 13,500 total to be split evenly between the two municipalities. That's for the five signals in each town and the central camera location. In discussing the contract with Ocean State, they said it's all or nothing. We can't just pay for our own part of the system, let Agawam pay for theirs. It'll only be done through one contract, and that's why we'd like to enter into the pay agreement with Agawam to pay for. So they'll pay us back our share after we pay for the entire contract. And like I said, we're asking for five years instead of three, so we can keep going all the way through the Memorial Ave project without interruption.
Mr. Knight, are you in agreement that we should move forward this tonight? I know we had some discussions previously, but...
Absolutely. There are a surprising amount of people who do regularly visit a website that has live view of that crossing, and they've come to depend on further morning commutes. So they've been anxiously waiting for the system to come live again. So I would definitely suggest entering into the agreement and executing the contract for this as soon as practically possible.
And the reason why I asked the question, the town of Agawam, complete agreement?
Oh, yes. I've spoken with the DPW superintendent Mario Mazza, city, or town engineer Michelle Chase, and Mayor Sapelli are all on board with the agreement to keep going for five years. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly?
Connor, you went over this a lot in our subcommittee meetings, but I was wondering, is there a record on this, the signaling things, of how many times and for how long this intersection at the Strathmore Crossing is blocked?
If you go to Ocean State, I can, I can look into that. I think that would...
I think that would be good, because, you know, if we were building that crossing today, it would not be the crossing that it is. We'd probably build a flyover. And I know I've had discussions with our people in Congress and Mayor Sapelli and other people that perhaps we really need to think seriously about getting some federal help and building a flyover between West Springfield and Agawam. And I know Agawam would be on board with something like that. It's, we're not, not at a rural crossing in Kansas somewhere. So I'd appreciate it if you'd get that information for us.
Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Just so we know, the money side of it, the number on the PDF, I remember, it's something like 11 grand?
It is for the, just the signals between the two towns. There is another $2,500 fee for the actual camera system setup that detects when the rail crossing is occupied.
Follow-up question. Is that our share, or is it a cost, or is there cost sharing with our neighboring town?
The total cost for the project is split evenly between us and them.
Thank you.
So how about if whoever wins the Thanksgiving football game doesn't have to pay that year? Make the other town pay. Okay.
Did we get a report in the committee?
Yes.
Yes, three to zero.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's go to the vote. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Next up, move to, I move to authorize the mayor to accept a donation of certain land on Bernie Avenue as requested in his letter of August 11, 2021, and execute any documents reasonable and necessary for the conveyance.
Second.
I don't think this was taken up by the budget subcommittee. The reason why it wasn't taken up by the budget subcommittee is because there was no monetary value that was placed on the land. It is a donation. I'll turn it over to Attorney Kate O'Brien Scott for just some further clarification.
Thank you, President Griffin. So this parcel of land is owned by Andrea Poole, or Poole, I'm sorry. She owns also, it's one of two parcels that have been commonly known as 695 Bernie Avenue. We just purchased the first parcel with funds that we received from the state's land grant. That was authorized by the council last December, so we paid for 400,000 of it with state money. We paid for the remaining 580, no, I'm sorry, 485 with CPA funds. It's going to be protected conservation land. So this is the second piece of that parcel that Ms. Poole owns that she has agreed to donate to the town free of charge. Just in case anyone's wondering, the reason someone would donate land, it was separated into a transaction, is to get a tax benefit for her. So she can deduct the value of the gift and offset the proceeds if she was paid on the other parcel. So she's working with her accountants to make that work, and this would be the acceptance of this for free.
Any further discussion amongst my fellow counselors? Counsel Beck?
Are we losing any tax revenue by accepting this?
I knew that you were going to ask me that, and I actually thought Counsel Eager would be asking me that, so I'm just going to...
Thank you, Nate.
Get you the answer now.
Counsel Beck? I'm here for you, man.
I believe it's categorized, this parcel is undevelopable, so the value of it would be lower.
It's right on Bernie.
So that's like when you come to the end of Bernie.
And Piper.
Piper, it's right, that one right in front of you.
How is that undevelopable? It's right on a major street.
I'm sorry.
It's hollow grade, and it's wetland.
It does have quite a bit of wetland over there, but it's vacant land. So it's valued at $169, which... So give you tax revenue of... This is not working for me, of course, because I'm under pressure. Approximate, a little under $3,000 in annual tax revenue for this parcel.
No, no.
I see a heavy pause.
Continue on. I will, I will ask, I might reserve to ask a follow-up question.
So, thank you. So I believe the land is on, has, is bordered by highways on two sides, 91 and 90. Is there, is there any recreational, you know, any way this could be, contribute to recreational use for the town?
Yes, and that's what's planned. That's to have this be sort of an additional passive recreation area to kind of complement the Bear Hole place.
Thank you.
Counsel Eager?
Actually, well, this is actually not a finance question. If, it's just the, the property, the property in question is a right on intersection on Piper and Bernie?
Yes. So when you come down Bernie Ave and you get to the part where Piper comes, yes, to the intersection, and you go left and go to Bernie, it's that property that's right in front of you.
And if I remembered that intersection correctly, it's, it actually, it can be confusing at anything near legal speeds. So would that make it easier to make that intersection safer for the town? This might be a question for our engineer.
I mean, I guess ideally it would, because we'd own that land. We wouldn't have to do a taking if we needed to do anything in that area. So I guess, depending on what the, whatever traffic design comes up. We also own the property on the corner there, which we purchased last year to do the new sewer pump station, so that gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. So I can see some value of the land for us?
Any further questions? Okay. Seeing none, let's go to the vote. Counsel Beck?
Yes.
Counsel DiStefano?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin votes yes. By a vote of eight in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Anything else to come before the council this evening? If not, I move to adjourn. All in favor?
All right. So move.